Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Dax Karantonis. I chair the county board this year, joined here by all my colleagues, Ms. Cunningham, Vice Chair De Feranti, Ms. Coffey, and Mr. Spain. We are here at the last work session on the fiscal year 2026 budget. This is the chair's markup session. We had our last wrap-up on all pending questions to this budget last Monday, and we are gathering today to look at individual appropriations for specific purposes that came up during the long budget session this year. Again, a huge thank to two groups of people who have brought us, who have worked behind the scenes and in front of the scenes for, during the session, to begin with, with all the staff that is with the Department of Management and Finance. So really thank you for all this work. They continue to be running the spreadsheets behind the scenes, and the spreadsheet that will come up shortly, which is the balancing spreadsheet with all the, noting all the appropriations that are pending, and we will be discussing today. These people have been doing amazing work, and we couldn't be more grateful to them. I also want to be very appreciative of my colleagues, Ms. Cunningham, Mr. De Feranti, who have been spearheading the work of combining the individual desires and input to this budget. Part of their work is reflected in this spreadsheet that you will going to see shortly. Can we project it? So on the process today, we will go line by line and indicate our agreement or disagreement, or discuss if there is anything that needs to be clarified there, both for items that you see there or for items that you may miss from this list. After all, this is a chair's markup. It doesn't pretend to be complete. Things may be missing here. And at the end, the spreadsheet is constructed in a way that it shows us every time whether we have, you know, whether there is funding available or not, or not available under the following conditions. The number one is that there is no tax rate increase, or the tax rate increase on this spreadsheet is zero, and I believe this reflects at this point the majority, for real estate, yes, correct, the majority of the county board's positioning. Other fee increases, including a tax, a meals tax increase, are contemplated here. So they are as proposed with the county manager's budget at the very beginning. So I see the spreadsheet right now on the screen, and we can start on, and you can, and we can start on line 30. Is that correct? Okay. Line 30 is the sheriff's office. They, this is an appropriation of $1,875 as a bonus for sheriff deputy. This is mostly for, and DMF can correct me on that, mostly for 83 employees who are directly, who have, you know, they're mission-facing, all of them, and they are directly, they have the heaviest work there, and they haven't, and they are not going to be receiving any other increase or significant other increase in salary due to upgrade of their position or promotion, et cetera. So the total cost of that is $227,000 from one time as a bonus, as a one-time expense. Ms. De Feranti, or colleagues, do you want to comment on this?
I'm sure there may be discussion. I'll just try to narrow it a little even further. The sheriff, the deputy sheriffs, I think the captains, all, I know the captains, I don't know about the level below, will not be receiving this. Individuals who work in the sheriff's office, who are not directly facing the inmates, those remanded to our care, will not be receiving this. It is 83 people. Those 83 people will be receiving, as I understand it, the 3.5% increase that all employees receive. And in addition, the proposal is that they receive this $1,875. I've tried to focus this through working with DMF on those working directly with our, those remanded to our care. So that's just a little bit of context to the total increase. And the theory here, at least on my part, is that we want to keep those remanded to our care safe, and we know we have to value those directly working with them in order to best do that, in my view.
Yeah, I think we should have discussion on this item as we go right now. Ms. Coffey, then Mr. Spain, then Ms. Cunningham.
Well, I guess I would like to contemplate a different order of operations, because I think I have a motion that would substantially impact the funds available in the one-time column. And while in a fantastic budget year, there's nothing in the one-time column that I would be opposed to. I don't know, the success or not of the motion I would like to make really will determine what money is available for the other things in this column. And so it seems like going line by line without first contemplating what I would like to do is gonna lead to a lot of discussion that may be rendered moot.
Right. So I, we, we're not taking votes today, so, but this is a, I take indication of agreement or disagreement. But it is reasonable if you, if you have a, an issue that is so sized in a way that would have to send us back to the drawing board on some of the others. So I think that's reasonable to contemplate first. Colleagues, what is your opinion? Are you okay with looking at the motion first or going through?
Just so I can be clear, you say we're not taking any votes, right?
We are not, it's a work session, so we are not going to take any votes, but we will, but colleagues will indicate their agreement or disagreement.
Okay, yeah.
So that will, so the discussion here is the following. If Ms. Coffey, for example, says, well, I think that we should, she has a, if she, if she says that I think that the money for a sizable amount of money is not available, or is very risky or so, then it doesn't make any sense to go through the, through other appropriations. I guess, Ms. Coffey, this is not going to be for the entirety of the mark, but for a part of the mark, right?
I'm not sure what you're clarifying.
So the, I understand you saying that you have a motion or a, an input here that would affect the availability of funding. So how big, how much money are we talking about? Is it like $300,000, $500,000, a million dollars, or more?
Yeah, okay. So I had sent an email earlier today, kind of outlining where I'm at, about Metro. And so I would first, I think, ask staff to kind of enumerate where we stand with respect to the Metro refund, and then I will state my position, and then, yeah.
Would it be helpful if we go through the list that we have, because Metro is on there, it's a little bit further down. And if we see that there is agreement or disagreement in the previous ranks, and then we get to Metro, and if we feel that the appropriation that is proposed here for Metro is not sufficient, then we will have to go back and cut some things, right?
It just seems to me that that's a lot of work to do, almost in reverse, whereas if we know the base level of funding we're operating from, that mentality will carry us through the rest of our decisions.
Okay. So on this question, colleagues, how do you want me to handle that? Do we go through the list first, or, and we?
Just a second. I'm going to Mr. Mr. Chair, thank you. Again, I remind everyone, this is my first rodeo show here, and I would think it would be prudent of us, given that we probably have folks watching, and this is a, we've had a lot of time, perhaps not enough time, in some eyes of many, to do some things. But I think it's important to go through the list, right, and then go perhaps back and look at areas that we have concern about, because if we stop at every line, we will be here for a while. So I would say let's go through the list. That is, I'm just speaking for myself, and then we can circle back. Okay?
Mr. De Feranti, I saw your light.
So I was just, I'm aligned with going through the numbers, but I do think there's just a piece of substance that, based on the email that Ms. Coffey sent earlier today, just describe your big concept, and then we could go through the list. It would be my vote. That way, there is no, typically, there's not been specific votes, but conceptually, we get head nods, and we eventually get all the concepts out. So that would be, go through the list as presented, but I would also suggest, Ms. Coffey probably has a big enough concept that 30 seconds, you could probably describe some of your thinking.
I'm absolutely amenable to that. Ms. Cunningham? Okay. Let's discuss a little bit the million.
Yeah. Okay. So we are anticipating some degree of Metro Wamata refund, based on what conversations they have had around their budget. The current placeholder number that we have is $1 million. That is a very, it seems to me to be an initial number, not finalized, not certain. And staff have confirmed that there have been previous adjustments to the number that we have gotten at this stage in the process in prior years. I do not believe that it is financially responsible for us to consider a full million dollars at this time in order to balance our budget. I would prefer to use a placeholder number in the neighborhood of $300,000, which would mean seeking about $700,000 in reductions, although I believe that the chair's mark has us $140,000 in the green, so it wouldn't be quite 700,000. It'd be 700,000 minus 140,000. So, but I am taking very seriously the idea that we are in a tough financial situation here. And in this budget, I think there is only one direction that it's responsible to be incorrect in, and that is the direction of having money left over, and not of underestimating our costs or overestimating our revenue. And so to me, leaving it at 1 million in this line would be irresponsible, I think.
Okay. Point taken. To be, to be honest and frank, part of my thinking was that there is a significant risk in that. This is why we left unallocated as much as I could. But maybe staff wants to, or the county manager wants to comment on this.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Michelle to comment on that.
Yeah, we put out a work session response a little bit earlier today, and they, maybe this is more just process and how it works with Metro. So yes, their proposed budget does result in across Metro, 19 million of savings, or they're projecting savings. But what we know is, once Metro goes through their cost allocation process, there are three different formulas, Metro Bus, Metro Rail, and Metro Access. And very often, what we find is that initial estimate for each jurisdiction changes once they get through those allocations. In addition, if there is a, this sounds funny, but if there's a service change, like on the red line, or Metro Bus and a regional bus, then it can impact us. So we don't know that that, we, there will be some level of one-time refund to us, whether we can count on it being a million or something less, I think, is a question until they go through that, you know, until they go through that process.
And so what would be the prudent number to put there if we call it a prudent number?
Okay. Yeah, yeah. I think it's all dependent on your risk tolerance, right? You know, some years it's been 50, some years it's been 300, some years, it just, it all, it all just depends. What we do know is that it's one time, and I just will, Metro is gonna be really hard next year in '27 and '28, especially if we lose pre-funding and other things. It's just gonna be really hard.
Correct. But, you know, this million would probably have no effect whatsoever on the financial position next year. So except minimal one. Talking about Metro and the orders of magnitude, we talk, we talk there. Colleagues, any comments on this?
Just to clarify, have we had an experience, it sounds like we've had several experiences where the initial estimate was high? Kind of how far has that missed in the worst case to date? Could you remember any big, big years where it was?
Jason's on the line. It just, it really, it just has depended. I don't, yeah. And it depends on where it falls in the formulas, right? I mean, and if you're changing headways on the red line, then that impacts us less. When you're, I, I'm sorry, I don't, I feel like I'm not helping you all, but it's just, it's hard for me to caveat that. I think there's some concern about the budget savings that Metro is using to, you know, are they investing in maintenance capital and things like that, so.
Great. Well, I appreciate the concept and lifting this up. I think we are in very unusual times and headed towards other, more unusual times potentially. So I think it's the right question, and we've been asking it in every work session and all the way through. Where can we defer, save, hold off a little bit? And I think we'll talk a little later about Pago and some other things that, you know, we've gotten in there and thought about a lot of pieces, probably gonna defer some of those decisions to June. And I think I would be supportive of Ms. Coffey's, the spirit of the idea, and open to whether it's 300 or 500, or something less than a million. And then if it's, if it's a better outcome, we can talk later about needs later in the year.
Mr. De Feranti?
Three thoughts. First, not only the one time that's left, the 140, plus the ongoing, I'm not gonna be for adds. So that would, would take us from a million down to 860, or 850, or 40. That's a first step, just putting my cards on the table. Second, want to test my understanding with DMF. The fiscal concern that I think is well-placed that Ms. Coffey has, and perhaps well-placed at this moment, given the markets today, is we would use the 11.5 million first, and then, that is slated for economic stabilization, and then we would, if we still needed beyond that money, then we would, that's the contingency that Ms. Coffey is worried about? Or is that, or would it not be available to us to, assuming we made the findings required by the economic stabilization, we could use 300, 600,000 of that 11.5 million to address some of the concerns if Metro came in low?
Yeah. So we had talked about this a little bit earlier. It's really, and I'm not dodging your question, it's just gonna depend on what happens. If we are losing revenue from things that are a direct result of what's happening across the river, then first place I would go would be to the 11 and a half million dollars. Now, it's possible that we could have a scenario where there's a revenue loss that isn't associated with that. We would have to pick through that and find another way to sort of restore it. So I'm not, you know, I think conceptually, probably you're right. But again, that's one of the reasons why I've been pushing to wait a few more months to see what happens before I'm able to answer that question. We're all trying to balance what we don't know is gonna happen. So, but I agree with you broadly that that's the place where we would look first.
Yeah, got it. So for me, that's, that's the level of risk. Like, do, do I actively think that, you know, and there are other buckets of money. We have the Climate Action Fund, don't wanna go there. We have schools money, we don't wanna go there. We have, I don't think that the communications dollars for digital equity could, but for me, all of those buckets are what leads me to a level of, we would have to fall more than 11.5 million to me, for me to be worried about the 300,000 or 400,000 or 500,000 that is the delta. And that's, that's why I support the spirit of what you're saying. I'm just not at the level necessarily that you are. But I appreciate it, and I'm mindful that we've got enough context on the table. Leave it to the chair and colleagues as to whether we would then go through the other items. But it's, that's for your call, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Spain?
So I think Ms. Coffey raises some, some thoughts and some concerns that, you know, when we look at Wamata funding and the level of uncertainty, we don't know what we don't know. And, you know, I too am a bit concerned, but I'm inclined to really see where this may hash out with perhaps a different number. I understand Wamata, that money is not here yet, and whether we decide to go elsewhere, that's to be determined. I just want to also make sure, you know, we started at, Sam, we're gonna talk about a minute or two. I'm seeing where this conversation is going, quite honestly, and I think we can circle back at some point in time, given the concerns that's on the table. But I'm open to perhaps looking at something outside of this, the 1 million dollars, which we don't have a guarantee right now that we're even gonna receive. So let me, I would love to push on and give it some consideration. But I think we can do that later.
So one, I have one, one question maybe for, for Michelle. About when are we going to know the details of, I mean, the real, the bottom line?
I think, Jason, we're a little bit early on budget adoption this year, right? Number one. I think Jason feels like we should know in the next few weeks, some sense of what those allocations are. Sometimes there is a May or June surprise, depending on any service changes, right, that are made at the other levels. So it could be a two-tranche effort. Hopefully, it's only one. We'll know in the next couple of weeks, hopefully.
So literally, colleagues, the only reason why I was more comfortable to take this risk in reality, about 800,000, 750 initially thinking, was to, because we would know early before the fiscal year actually hits, whether this money is, what amount of this money will be available. Some, some amount will be available. I fully think that it will be somewhere closer to half a million or $600,000. And that this would give us enough space and enough time to modify some of the, of the expenditures here, plus have a serious discussion whether we use a stabilization fund for, for any of these. What I would propose is to continue as we are, and I would stay to my mark, at this, stand to my mark at this point, but mark positions that you would see as modifiable in case that this doesn't, doesn't materialize. And then come back when we know the real, the real numbers, which will be in a few, few weeks' time. How about that?
I think my preference from a policymaking standpoint would, frankly, to be, to do the reverse, to start with the conservative version. And then in May or June, if we find out that there is more money, then we already have a list of things that we would want to spend that on. I think that that, to me, makes a lot more sense. But it's also, I think, very possible that even if Wamata refund comes back at the best-case scenario, that maybe we have other financial information at that point in time that indicates we may need that additional Wamata money to spend on other things. And I understand we could tap into the stabilization fund, but I think I would rather protect the must-haves before some of the nice-to-haves. And I think if we have the opportunity to come back and talk about what we spend it on when we have a precise number, it's, it's much easier to add things, and people are much happier when you give them additional expenses, expenditures, than when you tell them, we're gonna do this for you, and then down the line say, actually, we have to take this away. Especially, I think, when it comes to compensation, when it comes to some of our contracts, when it comes to money that people are going to rely upon being there. If we tell them that it's there, it's much, much more challenging down the line for us to reverse course.
Which is correct, but I wouldn't touch the compensation commitments, et cetera. This would be, actually, this is why I said we can have, you know, two years here. One year is the must-haves, and they are covered even without the metro appropriation, or for most part, they are, and the others are not.
She was first.
Ms. Cunningham?
We may need just a clarification of the process we're gonna go through at the end of this discussion. But it seems to me that some of these, you know, first of all, I concur with Ms. Coffey that being more conservative at the outset probably makes sense, especially this year. Secondly, even of the like-to-haves or must-have, some have to be decided now versus could be decided in June. So things like setting fees, for instance, you can't
Yes.
push off to the last minute. So just sort of, as we go through, we categorize.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. De Feranti.
So I agree with Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Coffey that we have to make a mark today. We have to decide where we are today. We're really only talking about one-time money right now. We're not talking about ongoing, first. Second, for the last three years, every single time Metro's come back, their finances have been better. Randy Clark said in a meeting I was at, you will get money. He was very specific. And then the follow-up was a million. Going down to 860 is good. This is all, for literally two and a half years, every time Metro's been better. I think the rest of the economy is in, is in a real challenge. But the return to office, I'm confident that there will be Metro money, and I want to use the 11.5 million first. But I totally agree that we need to be careful. And we're just talking about, really, I believe we're talking about the difference between 300,000 about in one-time money and 800,000. And I think it's absolutely important and clear that we've gotten on the table the position and the policy place that two of us are at. And, and I would suggest we go through the rest of the line items now. That doesn't mean that colleagues should have to identify ones that they wouldn't want to do. I just, maybe we go through and work through the other items and see if there's some level of agreement, and then come back to this discussion.
I agree. I agree too. And I am sure that we, that we'll stumble upon this a little bit down the road. It is absolutely clear that this is a challenge. It is absolutely clear that this is a challenge here. So, and it's a reasonable challenge. So let's see where we are in, in the individual line items. There are not so many, and then we can continue this conversation after that. So on the sheriff bonuses, eighteen hundred seventy-five dollars.
I think we should just go on.
Are we, did we have agreement on these?
I think Mr. Spain proposed that we just run through the list without
On the entire, okay.
And then come back.
I'm, I'm fine with that. So the, the second one is the AD, adopt color affairs fee change at half the level of the proposed budget. The number here just reflects that, that adjustment. This is, we, we heard from organizations here that they, that, that will be difficult for them to, 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 to pay these fees in the introductory year. At this, we contemplated a, a potential to compensate them from, from one time for this, but I think it's a better idea to just half the, the fee and adjust it next year for, for the, for the other half. AD, this is restoring Clarendon Alliance's funding to the full funded amount of last year. These, these were fifty-five thousand, and with that, all three partnerships will receive the same amount of money that they, that they received last year. On the county manager's office, office of
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I don't want to slow us, but I think that on this, the cultural affairs and the Clarendon Alliance, we may have unanimity, but I am not sure. I don't want the processes that Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Coffey suggested, and Mr. Spain, is to go through everything, but where there is unanimity, I would propose we try to see if we could find that.
I was trying to get for each, to have the sentiment for each item, so on these two, is there agreement mostly?
I'm all good.
On the two for AD?
On AD, and yes, the two of AD, Clarendon. So I see thumbs up from Mrs. Spain, Ms. Coffey, Mr. Differentiate, and myself. Ms. Cunningham, yes. So it's basically unanimous. So let me make a note so that I have it. So next is Office of Human Rights, Fair Housing, Education, Enforcement. These are ten thousand dollars for one time, and the independent police auditor who staffs the, the community oversight board, it's, it's temporary paralegal support, one for ten thousand, the other for twenty-five thousand. Is there any objections?
I'm supportive, but I think that there may be some who might not be, so maybe we should just go on.
I, I think these are, these are places in which if we did not have funding available, I think we would have to have a conversation. There is nothing on this list that I do not support as a matter of policy. The question is what money is actually available in my mind.
Okay. I noted that. Reclassified, so then reclassify auditor positions halfway through the year for the Commissioner of Revenue, that's line thirty-five. These are forty-three thousand one hundred eighty-eight from ongoing. Are there objections to that? The idea was that this may have a beneficial effect on, on the revenue side as well, according to the Commissioner of Revenue.
This is ongoing, but I would imagine that Ms. Coffey's caveat would apply to this.
Applies to this. Mine, too, by the way. So then, line thirty-six, the reimbursement of SCRA, monitoring for indigenous defendants. This is, this was originally funded by the federal, federal budget, and these are, I think they are, they are wearables that, that control for alco, alcohemia, so that people can, don't have to be in jail or so, that, is there any objection to that? This is, this is, okay, thirty-six. Then temporary contract, this is line thirty-seven, temporary contract support, oh, sorry, thirty-eight. I was wrong on my, my list. No increase, no increase for adaptive reuse fee until twenty twenty-seven.
You skipped the law library.
Oh, the, yeah, the, yeah, the law library? You want to?
Court to court.
Sorry. Yes. My, my bad, and I don't see well my, let me make it a little
You should do it online, but live, it's, it's because of the red light. This is showing the full, you're just not, I'm looking at it, just says library on line thirty-seven. Just a display.
I wonder if I can stand it. Yeah.
So now I, I lost it. So the, the line has a different height, right?
Line thirty-seven.
Line thirty-seven. So, so that's temporary contract support for indigenous clients at law library. This is what the clerk of the court has asked us to, to fund, which is, in my opinion, I agree with that, but it's also nice to have, right? So in my, in my, in my opinion, anyway. It's general agreement?
I would preserve it as a place to have a conversation if we need reductions.
Correct. So then, line thirty-eight, no increase to the adaptive reuse fee until fiscal year twenty-seven. That's, that's a specific fee, that's a specific, basically, discount or relief that we provide for, for the development fees if, if the proposed development is adaptive reuse. This is a policy preference fee. How are people feeling about that? Ms. Coffey?
I guess I have a question for our finance staff about the next, this row and the next row are two fee schedule choices that we're making, and one is in the ongoing column and one is in the one-time column. Do we feel okay with that, having them in, in two different places? Is, I guess, I'm just kind of seeking confirmation that. You want to go?
I think in this situation, either are appropriate if the board is directing and giving us guidance that with the funding in the one, one-time column, that the expectation from the board is that the fee will be increased
Okay.
In fiscal year twenty-seven.
And then I think implicit is also, though, that the small, the six thousand dollars for childcare might not be something that we would ever, you would ever increase, given the small dollar amount in the board priority in childcare, right? But I think, but again, you need to give us feedback on this, that there's idea that we are moving to full-cost recovery where we should be. The question is phasing timeline, that kind of thing. Is that helpful?
Yeah, it is. As long as, as long as we feel like we can acceptably put it in that column and it's not crossing any of our financial guideline rules, then, then I'm fine with that. You know, I think this is a place I would also preserve for conversation if we need additional, need to find additional one-time money. I, I think there's also a reasonable conversation to have about whether this specific, I know we've broken out two fees. I feel strongly about the childcare fee and potentially reconsidering that altogether, as Ms. Cowan said, but whether the adaptive reuse fee of all of the fees is the appropriate one, and I will allow Ms. Cunningham to speak a little bit more to that.
Sure. Yeah, I think, I think one of the things we've all been struggling with staff throughout the year, and the rest of us for just a month or two, is, is the question of how our development fund and our fees even out so that we can have full-cost recovery over time, and we had a plan to do that across two years, kind of notionally, that we would give people a little time to, to grow into that, and because of the budget pressures this year, this, the proposed budget recommended doing all of it in one year. We asked as a budget question for staff to go back and look at which are the highest pain points, that could be from an equity perspective, from a business impact perspective, the largest challenges. That number is larger than this number. So option two was presented, I think it's three hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars. Again, if we had the money, I would recommend, because that was the surgical effort, taking all the feedback from the community, and who was being impacted by the fees, I would recommend we take that full amount as a one-time, where we, where we take those fees and delay them across two years. That would be a much bigger number than this, and it goes to the broader question of balancing. But to me, in these times, I mean, a lot of the work that we do on this board is about development. We want to continue to be an amazing place to do business, an amazing place to invest, an amazing place to live, and part of that is making sure that our permitting processes and our fee structures are such that they are encouraging activity and, and investment. And so I know we got to make some compromises here, but that's kind of where I'm coming from, is, is probably the most important thing, the hardest thing about this budget, is the attempt to put that all in one year, and, and while I fully, fully believe in cost recovery, doing it over two years, at least for those most highly impacted, seems to make sense to me. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham, Mr. Differentiate.
So the other pieces of the fees fall into, as I understand it, fall into two buckets. One is the costs, significant costs that would be incurred in a single-family home development, and another is in multifamily and site plan-based development. And we, reading the NAAP letter and thinking about the cost here, I don't, for site plans, the cost is a relatively minor amount of the total, and then I do not feel, I feel that the need for cost recovery is sufficiently important, and I'm not at the three sixty. The specific policy reasons for the childcare in, in the conversations, I support that on a policy basis. The specific policy reason for the adaptive reuse is that I think we're at a unique moment where we have to change buildings, and doing it for one year, I want to make blindingly clear, this is, at least from my standpoint, this would be one year only, and I would want the budget to come back with this fee in it next year. So those are the policy bases, and I actually think that, that, that's at least a slightly distinct policy reason for the adaptive reuse, and I'm just not there on the full cost, given the circumstances.
Thank you, Mrs. Spain. I have to say, in my thinking here, what I heard from those who are mostly impacted with that, especially developers, et cetera, is their, their biggest cost is the, the timeline and the, of, of the process. They, they think that the timeline is too long, the uncertainties are too many, and they, and they are asking, asking us to just streamline or be a lot more responsive in, in, on the procedural side. I don't believe that we can accomplish that at that level very, very fast. Definitely having a, you know, carrying over a deficit in our, in our development fund over years, because the, the fund will continue to be deficitary even if we, you know, did full-cost recovery here for, for a year, the, the fund is still deficitary, too, for, for, for several fiscal years to come, I believe under thirty-one. So I'm, I see the, the reason for, for adaptive reuse, definitely for childcare, and I think that at the very least, we can do this at this point. We have to be careful in, in our, in our budget guidance to see whether we can really impress upon everybody who's involved here to find ways to improve the process and the So moving on, on this, line number four, that's CPHD, restore the code enforcement position. This is one thirty-eight thousand five hundred forty-eight from ongoing, because this is an FTE. This is the one, one FTE. Agreement or disagreement on this?
So, I mean, I think
Vice Chair?
This was my last position in, in ongoing, but I could imagine that the outcome of the discussion on the, the Metro funding could be pertinent to this. I am supportive of this position, but it's a little contention on, because one thirty-eight in ongoing could be used to reduce your one-time costs if you, if you wanted, so I'd be for it, but I also could imagine that colleagues might want to preserve this one. I'm not sure where other colleagues are.
In full, in full disclosure, I want, I was not very supportive of that for, you know, fiscal frame reasons, not because I don't see the utility of this. Other opinions on this?
I, I, there are, there are one-time expenses that I would cut before I cut this position.
Sure.
It doesn't mean I wouldn't be willing to look at this, but it's kind of in the middle tier, I guess, of my prioritization list.
And it is, and it's covered by the frame, we have full budget for ongoing, so this is why I included that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I, I would just say, we heard from a number of our commissions and a number of folks, stakeholders in, in our community, I think that should also, in large part, with our fiscal responsibility, kind of put us in a position where we can make decisions. I, I think this is a position really that needs to remain, and again, just want to lend my voice to that, and also those of individuals that have asked us really to make sure we keep this position, not keeping this position, actually extend some timelines in some of the services, and already in a hectic way of operations, I think we, this is one I, we're going to stand behind, and I think it needs to stick around.
Well noted. So, so there's a majority supporting that, absolutely okay. Then, if not a unanimous support. CPHD Development Fund, restore the, the plan review position. It is zero here, but actually, it's a different tab under the Development Fund, because this is, this is a position that's funded there. It's one hundred and seventy thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars, and it's ongoing. I've, I'm very in support of this particular position, has a lot to do with, not only with serving the, the, supporting the work plan of CPHD, but also with, you know, having the, the capacity to accelerate delivery on, on site plan review, et cetera. So any, any objections to this? I don't see any, so we can move on. This is, so the Commonwealth's Attorney, Temporary Communications Staff, this is for the needs of the Commonwealth's Attorney, there's a hundred thousand from one-time funding for the needs of the Commonwealth's Attorney for communications, that is, you know, press relations, community relations, community engagement, et cetera, similar to what the Sheriff's Department has, similar to what our ACPD has, our Police Department has. Are there any comments on that?
I will, I will talk to this just briefly. This is another area where we received a large majority of input from the community on, and I know this is an area that the Commonwealth Attorney has advocated for, for many years, understanding the fiscal constraints that we're in. I think it, and, and in this moment, more so than ever, is critically important that all of our agencies have effective tools and individuals to communicate broadly across the two hundred and forty thousand people here in Arlington. I think this will be well-served in one time, I, I believe, but as we look further down the road, how we communicate as a county across collaboration is going to also be important, and I don't think we do enough of that right now. People are operating, sharing information in sallos, but I think this is a good start, and I think the Commonwealth Attorney has some great ideas about how they're going to work there, to, and her staff, to effectively pass information throughout the community about the services and things that are happening relative to the citizenry.
Thank you. Vice Chair, differentiate.
I am supportive of this and the next item. I certainly have had a number of conversations with advocates, but also with our Commonwealth's Attorney regarding this. I do think that, given our constraints, it's responsible to do one time for this. I, I think that there can be healthy discussion, there are different sizes of our different public safety agencies, and the number of public information officers. I do think the one time is, is appropriate, and I would just note that on the subsequent line, the original ask was for a full additional attorney position. I did not support that, but I do think that the deputy can add experience, and there could be candidates that could add to the could be candidates that could add to the, to the work of the full office, and that's why I supported, support those two.
Okay. Since we're collecting support for line item 42-
I'm there.
-which is only the temp communication staff, uh, I'm supportive of that. In Ms. Coffey's categories, I would put it in the middle as well, uh, but not, not as a nice-to-have. I understand the constraints there, especially in that, in that moment we are, where, uh, you know, how you communicate the part, the law, how you communicate the, the, the action of the officers of the law is extremely important, and we don't have anything equivalent here, and I, and I think this will be important. We will have, I'm afraid that we'll face significant challenges there, and we will have to, uh, and, and this will be a helpful position to have, um, at this point. So, I think that it has majority support for now.
Yeah, we just weigh in as well. Of the two Commonwealth Attorney, um, items here, I think the second one is, is more crucial than the first.
Agreed.
Again, obviously, nothing on here is something we wouldn't want to do if we had the funds, but, um, I think the, the ability to hire some of the ex, you know, exiting federal workforce at an appropriate level has more to do with 43 and 42, could be as we have funds available. Um, it could start mid-year, it could be contract, et cetera. So, I think it's the same as, you know, it's in the middle category.
So, I, I sense that on, on line item 43, there is unanimous support. That's a hard, right? So, and it's also in ongoing, as it should be, and it's covered. So, that's also unanimous if-
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Um, I would concur with Ms. Cunningham. I think, um, our Commonwealth's Attorney came to us with many asks, um, all legitimate, but if I were to prioritize amongst the two we have on here, I would personally prioritize the conversion to a deputy attorney.
So, thank you. So, that's unanimously supported, I believe. Then, line 44 is the, uh, issue that we have discussed at the very beginning. Let's, let's jump to the next one. DHS Childcare Subsidy, temporary local subsidy for families, um, who are eligible for state subsidy but are not on the waitlist. This is to bridge, uh, the, um, uh, to, to bridge the, the sometimes very crippling, uh, wait, wait times until a properly funded, uh, position is available for these families. Ms. Coffey?
Yeah. I, I suggested this, so obviously, I support it, but I also will say that this is a place that I would prefer, preserve for discussion if we do not have sufficient funds to cover everything we would like to do. Um, I would not want to go below 200,000. I think at 200,000, we can still do a lot of good for a lot of families, um, but, understanding financial pressures, I'm, I am willing to take cuts from things that I'm putting forward as well. Um, and I think, I think that's important, uh, to share, but I, 200,000 would really be my threshold. Um, and, yeah, we can, we can come back and talk about it. I think I've sent, uh, some pretty explanatory language around, um, with respect to this, but I, we, we have a number of families, we build up a waitlist, the state lets us clear it eventually, but if you are waiting for the funds, you may not be able to have childcare at all. Um, and so, this is a small thing that we can do to try and help, uh, our families, our lowest-income families who need care.
I extremely appreciate your flexibility to put 100,000 on the table there. As a down payment already.
Mr.-
If there's funds, I will keep it at 300,000, but-
I, I, at this point, I want to keep it up, up to 300,000. As a, as a clarification, I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, this is a, uh, this is available for as long the fund, the money is there anyway. It's from the get-go like this.
Yeah, I, I think we're conceptualizing it as a bit of a pilot program. Um, we'll see how it goes, but if the funds are exhausted, then we would not offer it to the next family on the waitlist.
Okay. Mr. Spain.
Oh, yes, Mr. Chair. I just want to, one, thank, uh, my colleague, Ms. Cunningham, excuse me, Ms. Coffey, excuse me. Uh, we talked briefly, uh, about this, uh, yesterday, and I wholeheartedly agree with where she's at. I think the spirit and intent behind this is, is duly noted, um, and so, I am aligned with her on, on this area. I also just want to take for a second, as we get through this process, that though we all have our initiatives and, um, you know, areas that we have focused on, I think at the end of the day, this budget is, and what we put together is going to be for all of Arlington. And that, uh, I think through that prism, right, I, I, you know, I learned a long time ago, there's no I in team. I think we need to really consider, this is going to, what we do here in this budget is affecting everyone in some way, shape, or form. So, I just want to kind of elevate that for a second, because I'm, I, I feel as though we are getting to this point where, you know, I did this, and I did that, and it's not what it's really all about, we're shaping this budget, in my opinion. It's about this entire community, and though everyone's going to get some level of benefit, and I just think, um, at this moment, I wanted to make that, that noted. But I appreciate you, Ms. Coffey, and, and explaining your thoughts behind this yesterday, and I look forward to supporting it.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Okay. Just as a note, that these are families that are already eligible for state subsidy. These are families that have a very tough access to childcare to begin with.
The, the threshold for eligibility for the state subsidy is 85% of the state median income, uh, which is obviously much lower than Arlington's median income. So, it is really people who are working or seeking work who just do not have the money for childcare here in Arlington, when it costs an average of about $30,000 for a family.
Which, which I, I mentioned only, Ms. Coffey, because when we think about what is kind of second category, uh, we should always calibrate about whom it serves. And for me, this serves people who I believe should be higher in the priority list. And on, on this note, food security mini-grants, that's line item number 46, uh, which is 150,000 from one-time. Uh, this is a, Mr. DeFranti, I think this is a second time that we have this mini-grant. They have worked very, very well last year.
Pretty sure this would be the third.
Third time.
Um, I think the spirit of your comments, Ms. Coffey, on the childcare, I just super appreciate. Um, and I would be into drawing the food down. I guess I would say that I think the food need and the hunger need has spiked, so my version of restraint in this item is to not seek any increase, because we're doing for AFAC. I think there's a lot of, in past directional conversations, I think colleagues have shared some support, but, uh, so I, I would not be for, I would be for continuing the 150, because there has been demand and application to.
Uh, other comments on that?
Uh, I would have strong support. I would, if there were additional money, I would put money there before a lot of other things.
Is that an item I can mark as unanimous support?
Yeah.
Okay. I, um, Ms. Cunningham.
No, I was just going to say yes.
Yes, okay. Good to hear. The next one is housing grants. This is a supplemental appropriation for special cases of, of, of housing grants. Is there any discussion to this? None? I see that as a unanimous support as well. That's line item 47. Line number 45, 48, is homeless services contracts increases. This is a lump sum of a million dollars. This is, um, these are, uh, contracts that have been RFP'd this year, uh, and they are currently in negotiation, and we, we are seeing that the appropriate, uh, level of funding is coming in high, or the, the needed level of funding is coming in higher than, than anticipated at the beginning of the procurement process. Um, the, I understand, and staff can weigh in on this, that this is a appropriate amount to cover for the, um, for the negotiation that we, that is ongoing right now.
Correct. We already included in the base budget 2.5 million for an increase, and we had pretty certainty on those numbers. There are just two remaining contracts that are under active negotiation that, again, knock on whatever, I hope we have done in the next three or four weeks, but this is our current estimate of those.
Uh, Ms. Spain, and then Mr. DeFranti.
No, no.
Mr. DeFranti.
I think we got a budget answer on the paper, but I think that enough questions, reasonable questions have been asked, that is it, is it possible for the manager, one of you, to just describe, because of the contracts, why this is appropriate to do one-time, as long as we, as a board, admonish so we don't commit a budget misdemeanor, or that next year, you, you would have to come with this included in the-
Yeah, I mean, I'm glad you mentioned that, because we, we do want the direction from you, and we would always come back and put that as an ongoing cost in the follow-on budget. We don't have precision as to the number right now, and so, uh, we, we do this when we're, sometimes we're in the middle of negotiations, or we have a bill that's come to us late, where we have to scramble to sort of find the funding for it. Um, I sent you a note on that. Uh, I just want to be clear, there's nothing wrong with making this ongoing, but there's also, it is, we've had conversations in the past with our financial advisor. This is not something that falls into that bucket, which is really bad, where you're taking an ongoing cost and saying, "We're just going to fund it with one-time money for the next few years." That is not our goal here, nor what our intent is. This is meant to sort of tide us over, get everything settled, and then we'll come back. And as Michelle said, we put a huge chunk of additional ongoing money already in this item, so.
I guess I would flag for Ms. Cunningham and colleagues and the manager, whether it would be useful or not, I think it's covered, but if we need to write guidance to that effect, I'm game.
Well, I, we take everything that you say here as guidance, so you're, you're welcome to write it, too.
Okay. Uh, well, in my opinion, there was no question about that. This is to, uh, close on contracts that we have right now on the table, and with, once we have closed, we, we have to honor this contract, so therefore, they will be next year in the ongoing budget. Uh, is there a unanimous support?
Yeah, I just want to, to state that I'm in full support of this as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Spain. I believe there is unanimous support on this. Uh, that was line item 48. For line number 49, the Northern Virginia Conservation Trust, this is one-time restoration of the annual appropriation for that at the level of $86,900. Uh, Ms. Coffey?
I would preserve this for discussion of cuts if we need to find additional funds.
Yeah. Uh, I note that. Ms. Cunningham?
I would, I would just add that, um, the proposed budget completely takes this relationship to zero, and I would like us to have something that at least steps down, rather than going all the way to zero, even if we have to make negotiations here.
Correct. If we have to revisit that, we could, uh, see that differently. I know that there was also some discussion to, to convert some of that to ongoing, et cetera, so, uh, right now, uh, I don't believe that we have too much ongoing to adjudicate there, but this is also a possibility.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I would just, just stay openly in some, a level of transparency. I think, I know I have, and perhaps some of my colleagues have had a conversation post, uh, proposed budget, uh, to speak with some of the stakeholders in our community, and also representatives of NVCT, and get a better understanding of their, um, their strategic outlook and, and some of the, the pipeline of projects and their involvement in Arlington. And I think, to perhaps Ms. Susan Cunningham's point, um, you know, we may be able to look down the road about, uh, what's the next iteration of our involvement with, uh, NVCT, but I think, uh, being so abrupt this year was a bit, uh, alarming to a lot of folks, so how we, we measure and take account of where we're at right now and look into the future is the way I would like to go. But I'm fully supportive of where we're at right now.
Okay. Uh, so this is a, it has an asterisk for later consideration, or whole or partial always, right? Um, then, uh, line item number 50, that's DPR, Department of Parks and Recs, revise the Longbridge Boeing, Boeing funding glide path to 50-50. So, uh, as you, I see, Mr. DeFranti, as you remember, this was, this is part of how we, uh, you know, uh, the, the Boeing subsidy for, uh, the Boeing sponsorship, actually, I should say, for the Longbridge, um, uh, facility is coming, in the coming fiscal years, to an end, and so, we have to begin to mix the reminder of this, of the Boeing support with, uh, ongoing money support, and that my proposal is to, to be here at $555,549,000. Is there any discussion on this? Ms. Cunningham?
I would just like to highlight, um, we are moving funds into this year that would otherwise be helpful to us in future years, and so, my preference, I, as we've talked about over the last couple of weeks, would be to, to take less of this this year, so that we don't have a cliff, uh, as soon as we do. Um, I don't think I'm going to win on that point, because the money is tight here, but I do just want to raise that. I, I think we've got a couple of years ahead of, of hard times, probably not just one, and that's a big hole to fill. And I would also just like to raise up that that is the only recreation center that does not have a transit line access to it, and while we have an intention to add one in the long term, um, it's not anywhere in the next couple of years. And so, before we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to support that facility, I hope that we will have at least a pilot transit, um, access point, so that all of our, our people across the county can access that new facility.
Ms. Coffey, then, Vice Chair DeFranti.
I predominantly align with Ms. Cunningham. In my initial musings in terms of our, our changes, I was taking less of, of this money in this year for Longbridge. Um, I am, it gives me some heartburn to think about the out years. Um, I think it'll be okay, and I think, uh, as Ms. Cunningham also alluded to, the, the math, uh, needs to work out for this year. Um, but I just, you know, I guess preserve a bookmark here of anxiety.
Thank you, Mr. DeFranti.
Um, I'm trying to remember, we got a spreadsheet on this. Is this a transition that would be complete in three years, or? Okay, okay. So, this is saving us ongoing money, so if you want to change the percentage, we're going to have to find ongoing cuts. I'll say that. And then, second, um, I used to be saying last, this past week, this is a snowstorm. You could argue that this is a flood, and so, my, that's why I'm interested in the, in spending money now, because I think you spend money, uh, to address things that are sh, that, I do not think we will have the economic challenge in four years that we're having this year and next year, and so, that's part of why I think that this is a responsible step to, to do on Boeing.
Any other comments on that? Uh, a general thing that we, that, uh, this is a, this is a moment to, to get very serious, because we have been kicking the can a little bit down the road about what happens when the Boeing money is not anymore available, and it's about time to begin to very seriously think about the business model of, for, for this center. I believe that there are, uh, ways to, to, uh, to operate the center without necessarily, uh, you know, without transferring the entirety of this cost on, on the public dollar. I mean, there are models in other places where there is a partial privatization, or a public partner, private, public-private partnership models, et cetera. We are not yet there, we don't have experience with that kind of, uh, facilities. I happen to have, uh, a professional, you know, past on this, so I know that this is feasible, uh, but not, not easy. Uh, the second thing on the, on the transportation, this is a separate discussion, and I agree with Ms. Cunningham. Uh, I wouldn't put it on the experimental side, but rather on the regular service side, because this is a, a sector that we, where we want to see people using the center. The good news is that for many close-by residents, uh, this is a very walkable, bikeable, uh, destination at this point, that these are not all our Lincolnians, these are just the close-by residents, of whom we have many. Uh, so I, I note that as-
Supported, right?
Uh, and it's covered by ongoing. Uh, line item 51, uh, that's the, uh, ranked choice voting education, uh, contribution of $60,000. Uh, that's, uh, there is no, we- there is no, we, this is a repetition of what we have done in the past. We appropriated a similar amount of money for, for educational outreach, for a system that obviously we have heard from many people that it needs educational outreach at this point. It is not very specific. And I believe that the, that the guidance has to be a little bit more specific about what exactly this, we, we intend to spend this money on if we agree to spend it. Mr. Spain?
No, you know, I, I think Ms. Coffey may have had her light on, but I'll, I'll talk out, I'll speak out to her.
No, that's, I, I would rather, because I think you're going to speak to the programmatic.
Sure, I will. So, you know, I am going to take some of the words from the, the chair who just said kicking the can down the road. And also I'm going to take a word from the county manager about precision and then, you know, about our nice to haves. So let me just say this, I've been around long enough to see that this is an application, a program that this county board implemented. And there were promises made, not promises kept. And so when I came here, one of the things I wanted to see if we can work on is how do we do a better job to educate and inform the hundred and sixty, seventy thousand folks in Arlington about ranked choice voting? Because in my sparing travels, a lot of folks don't know about it. There's been some attempts, there's been some work done by our county, large part by way of social media. But a lift of this magnitude is not just one time, I mind you. It will take many years to do this correctly. As I looked around this nation and saw other jurisdictions, i.e. Portland and many others who have done this, they have spent millions of dollars in training, the education about ranked choice voting. We're talking about sixty thousand dollars. And so what can we do this year? I am looking at perhaps us working out some level of a, a NOFA process, setting the scope of work to get out and, and educate and tell folks in our community about ranked choice voting in a very impartial, non-political way, non-partisan way. Because I think it's important since we started this program on the county board. This is just some follow-through, but I'll remind you and tell you right now, it does not stop in 2025. This is a continuum until we get it to a point to where everyone's savvy. You can't start nothing if you're not willing to finish it. And so this is just a small token to try to get something started again, because I believe we and whole Harley have not done our due diligence across the entire county of Arlington. Sixty, I started at a hundred thousand dollars when we had these conversations a few weeks ago. Now we're down to sixty. Some folks may want to scratch it. But I understand we need scope. I understand we need some decisive measures, but we can get there. And I think with sixty thousand dollars, that's enough for this year. But a NOFA type grant and some scoping still needs to be done. But it needs to happen in 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Spain. I see that, yes, sorry.
Yeah, I, I, you know, comes back to things that I support in general, but I'm fiscally conscious of our constraints right now. I also think, you know, I really, really would like to understand what success looks like here. I, I agree with reaching more people. You know, we mailed to every single registered voter in the county last year. Like, I think the idea that we primarily did social media is maybe not accurate to my experience of what we've done over the last year. And so really figuring out like, what is it we want? And then I just also would be conscious of the timeline with respect to the fiscal year begins July one. Voting, early voting for the general election begins in September. That is not a lot of time to do a competitive process or a planning process for deep community engagement. And so I, I think these are all things to be, you know, honest with ourselves about. This is going to have to be a, a board-led follow-through initiative. And so we need to have a plan amongst ourselves. And we need to define what success looks like for ourselves in order for this to be successful. But I would preserve this as a place to discuss additional reductions if we do not have sufficient funds.
Noted.
I would also raise a question of whether it might be more appropriate to look for some fiscal year twenty-five funds so we can get started a little sooner. But again, I think we need a champion for the initiative, and then I would defer.
Yes, Mr. Spain.
So I hear the, the concerns of my colleague and I, you know, we're not there on, on the same wavelength, I think, in that, in that regard. I come from a field, a train of thought, well, we got to figure out how to get the yes, and how just to make it happen. I know it's going to require some hard work on the part of the county board office, and I'm willing to work with all of my colleagues here. Again, realistically speaking, having done a couple of campaigns, most folks know that, sixty thousand dollars is not a lot of money. You're not going to get that much, but you're going to get some, some things better than nothing. And I think how we scope this and how we, you know, set this in some type of performance metric, what are we looking to obtain? I heard that, you know, mailers were put out last year, yet there were still folks, I, I think we just can't think that, you know, doing nothing is the answer. And I don't think, you know, that's perhaps been implied as much. But I say this again, I believe that we're going to have to do this year after year after year for many years and find out ways to do this right. If we have some funding left over in Cal, from fiscal year twenty-five budget and we can start early, so be it. But this is a continuum. This was started a couple of years ago from folks who are no longer here, and it dropped. We dropped the ball. The county board did. So I'm here to pick it back up and, and help with my colleagues to make this a, a bit better for everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spain. It's kept there, I guess, with conditional support here.
I'm supportive.
Okay. So then, next item, this is fifty-two, library collections, a hundred thousand dollars for, this is mostly for the e-collections of this, of the public library system to reduce or to at least manage the wait times for, you know, the highest in-demand digital assets. We heard a lot of testimony to restore, to, to add money to that. I want to remind everybody that there is already in the core budget of the library, say contingent that supports the, the collections already. So this is really an additional one. Colleagues, how do you feel about that? Mr. De Franty?
This is like a sort of, Ms. Coffey said, I got to say what I'm not, not all for in addition to, even on childcare. So this is my test, because there's no item, there's sixty people that came to us two weeks ago, and twenty of them came and said, we need more books. Do you care about kids reading America and greatness? Or whatever. And maybe they said something a little different. But I think there's a test in budgets as to whether you have responsibility and backbone. And for me, this is the first out if I subscribe to Ms. Coffey and Ms. Cunningham's, because I think most of those twenty people, if you said to them, it's hunger or books, they would say, maybe you got a point. They might not like it. And so this is my first out. But I will be honest that I am, it's the distance between five hundred and thirty-five K and four hundred and thirty-five K, as I count it, in where the math from Ms. Coffey and Ms. Cunningham's point of view, I'm not ultimately there, because I think that our budget is big enough. But I think it is, I want to at least be honest that if I look, there's maybe one other thing on this entire list that I'm not, that is, doesn't seem equity-based to me. There's a couple that are, you know, the code enforcement, is that a blinding equity-based position? I would say maybe not. But I just want to at least be honest that this is my kind of first out. I could associate myself with other colleagues. But I think that responsibility is not just about the math. And I think the number that we have been at is above twenty years, that we've had a triple-triple-A bond rating, which is one of about a hundred counties of thirty-one hundred in the United States. We're responsible, and I think we still will be. It's just that this is the, the one that I would have a question. I think engaging and listening to our community, we've all, our communities and that relationship is also something. And that's why ultimately it might be my first out, but I'm still going to be at a place to keep it in.
So this is conditional support. Other colleagues, how do they feel about the additional hundred thousand for library collections?
I think I'm similarly aligned. It, it seems like a really good candidate for aligning to Metro dollars we don't have yet and hoping that we can do it when we meet again in June.
Okay. The, the ceiling will fall on us. Okay, penultimate line, the Public Defender's Office reentry coordinator fellowship, as, as requested, it's one-time and it's scored at one hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and fifty. It's, what are the, the comments there? Ms. Coffey, I see your light.
I would say that this is one of my top choices to retain, no matter what. I think the Public Defender's Office and other stakeholders in our community have made very clear how critical these reentry services are. Not having them has left people in the jail for longer than they actually need to be. And our public defender attorneys are already overworked and trying to add reentry coordination on top of their legal caseload. And so this to me, from an equity perspective, from a public safety perspective, from a human services perspective, is the top of my list.
Right. I tend to agree with that. And because we know that they are extremely hardworking. I saw, Mr. Spain?
No, I'm, I'm aligned. We're good.
Okay, Mr. De Franty?
Both this one and the next one, I'm in full support.
Ms. Cunningham? Yes. And the non-attorney supplement, I believe that I, if I don't see any objections here, it, it is under the same. So at this point, we have gone through, and now we want to, to circle back to the initial conversation that we had. Now we have kind of a mapping of what could give if it had to.
Chair, since we, we sort of changed tactics in the middle, could we go back to the beginning of the list? Because I'm not sure we had the discussion.
To the what?
To the beginning. We, we were going to run through them without discussion and we ended up having the discussion for all but the first two.
Okay. So the sheriff or?
So on the, on the sheriff, I think this is the only bonus that's proposed in,
Correct.
in the budget this year. And I would welcome colleagues' input on how this number was set and what the justification is for it this year. And then from staff, confirmation that this doesn't trigger any collective bargaining required bonuses on other positions.
The order you gave, I did triple-check the no collective bargaining, but I shouldn't speak to that. Staff will. On the positions, on the costs, I think Ms. Callen indicated, so the, here's the thinking. The, there is a range, and correct me if I'm, if, if I'm wrong on any of this staff, at least this is my thinking in, in this. There's a range of increases that will apply through collective bargaining to our police and fire. No one person is necessarily average, but nine point five percent and somewhere around eleven percent are the numbers for police and fire respectively. Those are ongoing increases. I believe in collective bargaining. I think it is decently well documented, the competition for police and fire and the retention, the, the vacancy positions, whether you count all sixty-two on the police side, I think are, with respect to fire, investing so that our firefighters can go home more often to their families is important. We do not have the ongoing, we are only doing seven hundred thousand, which is less than a third of the ongoing increases, I believe, for police and fire for our sheriff's deputies. As a society, we have not fixed the problems that lead people to be medically unstable when they go to our jail, mental health and otherwise. I believe investing in the people who are directly working with inmates is important. I believe that job, there are a lot of county jobs that are difficult and many, many of the thirty-eight hundred that I probably would not be good at. But I believe that investing in the people is critical to helping those remanded to our care. And that, you know, the stories that we've heard, I believe them when it's spitting, kicking, et cetera. There are eighty-three people who are not higher-ups at the sheriff's office, captains, deputy. Giving them a one-time bonus that is halfway between three point five percent, which applies to all employees, and the nine point five percent average that is our police, is an indication that we care deeply about those line officers working directly with those remanded to our care. Eighteen seventy-five, as I understand it, is the one time to get us halfway from three point five percent to nine point five percent. And since it is a one-time investment, I believe it is valuing the people that are central to helping us care as we would wish to for those in our jail.
I see, Mr. Spain?
Oh, I thought Ms. Cunningham. So I want to align myself with a lot of what Vice Chair just stated, but I, I will say this. You know, there's some conversations made about, you know, the, the largest mental health facility in, in Arlington at any given time is the detention facility. That's probably right. And what our deputies have to take on each and every day, it can be, it could be life-changing and it's hard work. And the sheriff also came here and talked about the people's side, the human factor. Understanding, you know, pay for all our law enforcement officials, I think, needs to be reviewed and evaluated over time to make sure it's fair. I, I think this, to what our, our Vice Chair just stated, this, this small portion of, of one time is, is just, is okay. I'm fine with it. That doesn't mean all is going to be well. I, I care deeply about retention and recruiting in the police department, the fire department, and the sheriff's department at a time, especially when a lot of folks are just leaving. And we looked at some of our numbers where a lot of our sheriffs don't even live here in Arlington. There's a number of reasons behind that. The fact remains is that they do hard work and they may not be getting paid. They aren't getting paid at the same level in many cases as their counterparts. So this, this is, I'm okay with it. But it doesn't mean we don't have more work to do to find pay equity across all lines with our law enforcement officials. Thank you.
Ms. Cunningham?
I just would like to have a shout out to staff, both this year and across the last couple of years. There's been a lot of work going into attracting and retaining and, and supporting while working all of our public safety force members. And as I have reviewed the HR details that were shared with us, it appears to me we have a really great story, which is across the last four years, we have addressed the compression and any places that we were not in line with the market in these positions. And so I think it's great to give people bonuses. I think in a time of plenty, I'd love to do it everywhere. I don't see the specific justification here. And given how tight we are in the numbers, I would recommend that we consider a smaller number or skipping this for this year or keeping it for June and deciding whether we have the ability to do it. I do think, you know, as, as you said, the police ranges, it's just, it's not apples and oranges. We've been, we've been fixing compression in a lot of places. We still have more compression to fix for fire and I think for police, but they're getting between two percent and twenty-one percent. And fire's getting between one percent and thirty percent because there's adjustments that are going on that are very fine-tuned and done by people who have been careful about it. So I'll just leave it there. But I, I think this is still on the list of things that could be considered as we try to balance, for me.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. I, I have to say, I started my year by, by visiting the, the, the morning shift of the, at the jail. And I know that the people we're talking about here were exactly the people that were in this, in this room this morning. It was, I believe it was Christmas morning. It was. It was, it was, it left a lasting compression on me. And I have to tell you, the individual conversations that I had, both at my visits in the jail as well as talking with our deputies, with sheriff's deputies, they left really an impression of a workforce that is really very challenged, that is faced with increased challenges every day. And I agree with Mr. De Ferenti on that and Mr. Spain. I remember the slides that the sheriff brought us to us, that were all in red when it described the increase of challenges at the workplace, at these people's workplace, right? Like more attacks, more attempts to, you know, more challenging dealings with inmates, detained people, et cetera. So therefore, I'm not feeling, I feel the obligation to compensate for that. Ms. Cunningham, one thing I will concede to you, this is not the best method to do that. We're still kicking down the road, a can of, you know, finding a way to incorporate this kind of a compensation level in our ongoing funding, because this will come back probably again, again, again. Looking at the region, we, if I understand it correctly, in general, our sheriff's office is compensated better, a little bit better than Alexandria, but still not as good as Fairfax. So we are pretty much in the middle of the region. So personally, I'm comfortable with this appropriation here, the way this is proposed. Any other comments?
No, I think we, Ms. Cunningham, I mean, I would say that compression is not fully addressed at all by, in the sheriff's office, nor in the, nor as much as we want in police and fire. But $700,000 is all we're doing towards compression in the sheriff's office. But that's for future years. Your point is all well-taken. I just would note, I think, Mr. Chair, that either going through where there are additional items, I think someone said that there are additional questions for clarification and detail on other items, and there may be amendments that are not on this list. I do not have any, but others may.
Yeah, Ms. Cunningham asked to go through the first two items, so.
Yep, so that was one. And then for cultural affairs, fee change, I just, we didn't stop to talk about it, so I just want to make sure I'm tracking. I think we heard that about half of the organizations were going to be paying more and about half were going to be paying less with the fee change that is embedded. Again, this is a one-time fee change to get us to cost recovery, which I fully support getting us to cost recovery. I do think that some of those who are paying more, particularly who are smaller organizations, may need a bridge, and I think that's the spirit of this. I'm not sure that just cutting it, and I don't think it would all be ongoing necessarily either. Like, I think we want like a one-year bridge to help people budget for it going forward. I don't know that we need to give it to everyone. I think it should be more for those that are paying more, not for those that are paying less. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I understand that. I think, personally, I think that's an easier way to manage that at this point. I also, and, you know, we heard, especially from, and there are also big differences in, you know, you pay the same amount of money for a big venue, same amount of money for a small venue, because it's just one general staff, et cetera. I still stand to this appropriation. It's a minor thing. I think that most organizations can live with that. And yes, it's not completely fair to the size of the organization, et cetera, but it's far closer to fair than it was with a full amount and easier to manage, to administer.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think, though, that my vision would be that we would get to the full cost recovery after one year, and I don't think this is what's reflected here, right? This is saying you're only taking half of the level. You might take it another year, but it's.
Yeah, next year will be full, next year will be full recovery.
So shouldn't this be one-time dollars, then?
No, it is ongoing, because the, I believe that the original, the fees are in ongoing, and we are reducing the fee. Is that correct? Maybe our DMF folks can correct me on that.
Ongoing money that's, you know, we balance the budget to, but if logic, if you're using logic of a different decision that you've taken down here with explicit guidance that the fees are going up next year, then logically you could also use one time. I'm just saying with how you're processing through this.
So how would this look?
I think right now it's recorded as it would only increase by half in perpetuity. If what you intend to say is it's just for this year, to spread it over two years, then it should move to one time, I think.
I think there was discussion, there was some discussion a little bit with DMF that I had that was about, first that, two pieces to what you said. First, that really hard to re-figure and make qualitative decisions plausible based on budget size. But I think DMF staff seemed to say, what I heard, was that refiguring the proposal that was out there would be too complicated. Instead, let's achieve the goal of doing relief. That's on your first part. On your second part, I think if I recall correctly, we have to advertise correctly. And so I had had the idea, impose the fee and then rebate stuff. And I think Mr. Schwartz said, "That's crazy. It's too complicated. Just do half the damn fee and then figure it out." But I still think, based on the conclusion of that conversation, as I heard it, at least I am in a space, and I think we may be in a space where we want to do the full fee. We don't think that doing it in one year is fair. And so that's why I think it was left as, because you advertised fees specifically, so that's why it was, I think, left as ongoing. But I think you're fair to say that the eventual impact could be just a one time. I don't think it's a hill to die on, you know, but I do think our arts organizations, as you said, Ms. Cunningham, need to know that we are trying to care for them through this one-time piece.
Not trying to be funny here, but this is an example where budgeting isn't art, not a science.
Yeah, pun intended, right? So, but still, if it's a rebate, if it's a, if it's halving a fee, also halving the revenue that's coming from a fee, if the fee is in the ongoing column, so the reduced revenue has to be in the ongoing column as well. So I don't, I mean, this is for.
I think you can do it either way. So if we need to, in the end, balance, that's one place we can balance.
Okay. Guidance can definitely mention that we expect that next year this is going to be full recovery. So other questions, other items that colleagues may want to add before we subtract anything?
I mean, I just elevate again the pain points of the fee increases. I would like to see us do more, especially for our restaurants, entertainment, food delivery, and the NAAP pain points, so.
The NAAP pain points, oh, sorry.
Ms. Coffey first.
I might ask staff a little bit to elaborate on, I think there was a, not to say proposal, but a, an option.
Yes.
Developed that was around $360,000.
Yeah, I'm gonna, so I'm still with my original proposal, but we had an alternative. We put it on the table. And Danielle has been sitting at the table very patiently because she wants to explain every dollar of that to you.
Well, and that's exactly what I was going to ask, so.
Hi, so as part of follow-up, we did put two proposals forward. The first proposal being addressing what a phased approach to the development fund fee increases would look like. That would be over fiscal year and fiscal year '26. That was more significant. The second proposal that we put out there was more of a targeted fee approach. And that's what everybody's been talking about, about the $360,000 general fund impact, because that would be the general fund impact mostly burdened by CPHD. They went through ISD and zoning fees for the targeted approach and also planning. ISD and zoning are in the development fund and planning is in the general fund. For that targeted approach, they looked at NAAP concerns, pain points that they heard, pain points that they heard at contractors' meeting, also focused on any residential burdens, particularly like on the ISD side when you're looking at residential additions, alterations, things like that. Also focused based on TACUS, what you had mentioned at their work session, on looking at small business impacts, nonprofits, things like that. So those are the specific fee changes that you're seeing in that proposal are targeting those very specific fees. You're seeing a small DES impact to that in the general fund, as well as about a $600,000 development fund impact for that targeted proposal.
And I think it's attachment B that has the details of what was proposed after all that study. Again, acknowledging we are in a tight spot, yeah, B, and then the next page. There you go.
These would be the specific fees shown that they would be targeting for zoning, which is in the development fund. And there's three pages of those, ISD, zoning, and then planning, which is general fund.
Yeah, and I think it's the planning ones that struck me as most useful to consider. The first two there, which are, it's a small amount, but it's for Columbia Pike, which I think we want to encourage continued development there as much as possible. And then I think the other ones are down, the Minor Site Plan Amendment, I know is a huge pain point, but it's also a huge dollar amount. And then the use permit types one and two are the ones that hit small businesses and restaurants the most, if I am understanding correctly. So I would probably put those in priority order of the Columbia Pike ones, the type one and type two, and then any part of the Minor Site Plan Amendment people could bear to add.
Oh, you have them there. You can see them now. Okay. So good that they printed them. So, Ms. Coffey.
Yeah, I guess a kind of follow-up question that presumes that the next year of development is very normal and nothing has disrupted things, and I think that's a very safe feeling assumption right now. But I guess I'm kind of wondering about our ability to right-size based on the reactions over the next fiscal year. If we do implement either partial or full fee changes here, if we do actually materialize like deep impacts on our service industry or on our development community, to what extent in the future are we able to come back and say, maybe we did go too far? Maybe we need, you know, people seem happy to be able to pay X fee, but this one is really hurting us. And I know that a lot of work went into getting to where we are now, but can we continue that?
One of the challenges, and I think I mentioned this previously, and I want to raise this up because it's important. We're assuming a steady state of development, okay, from where we are right now. That may be, as time goes on, may prove to be not the most rational approach to this. We could have fewer projects coming through the pipeline, in which case all our revenue estimates would be optimistic. So even if we lower the fee rates that we're charging, we could still under-realize the revenue in the fund. So essentially, we have been, over the last three years, there's been a lot of things going on. One of them had been, I think, an IT system that cost a lot of money. But what's really going on, if you take a big step back, is that the development pipeline has slowed, economic activity has slowed. And so we're trying to correct that. This is a very difficult thing to do, especially as economic activity continues to contract. So we could be off and having to come to you and say, in order to keep the staff that we have right now, we need a bigger general fund contribution. That gets us into a cycle. I don't want to say it's not a death loop, because that isn't what it is. But it's a very challenging thing where we have to ask you, we'll make proposals to you, to make choices between, do you want to keep our development fund staff, or do you want to keep our staff that are working in DHS or some other department? So we're hoping we don't get there, but that's, I think, what you've elevated, and I agree with, that is a real concern.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey. Just a personal remark to that. I never understood the fees, and I went through the alternative proposals, so, especially on the GLAB amendment and even the Columbia Pike development fees. I don't believe that a project that's coming in right now will stumble necessarily upon the fees. It will stumble upon the process. It will stumble upon, you know, how fast things go, because this really costs a lot of money. An additional public meeting to each and every one of these categories is like multiple of the fees by itself, just in lawyer and, you know, legal fees, et cetera. Like Ms. Coffey, I'm extremely concerned about how realistic is the expectation that we will see the same level of development. Even further, I do believe that we will have to deal with an economy that will see, that will put us in a place with less revenue from just the normal tax base, where we don't increase the tax rate. And we've seen that already. We had a preview of that with our commercial tax base, right? So we are going to take significantly higher risks than what is reflected here, one way or the other. And we will have to be very, you know, observing of what happens almost on a quarterly basis, as I understand that, Mr. Schwartz. So at this point, I'm not, personally, I'm not, I don't want to, it's a good conversation to have. I don't want to go there because I don't believe that the juice is justifying the squeeze. On, there are some that, there are some fees that may be, you know, significant, especially for small developers, et cetera. I think, yeah, I think that, that's the permit type, oh, no, that's the live entertainment. That's to me not a big one. That's why we're applying for these fees now, that they will be making significantly more money. I would see how, I would leave it at this point. I'm not going to torture that more. And we, we have always the possibility to, if we come to a point where we stumble significantly on that, we can, we can always revise some of that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I align with the position you're in. I think I have to be accountable for not having delved in detail on each of the different fees, as you just have, Ms. Cunningham. I guess I did pull back out the NAAP letter, and I had a phone conversation separately on NAAP. And, you know, there is a piece that says, I could envision a guidance language that could lead to try to press on some of the processes and procedures. There's one specific one that was described to me, but there's some of the others, like if, how minor is minor? Like, if you have four words, that's a lot of money for four words. But at the same time, if those four words are the biggest deal in the world, then that's reasonable. So I guess what I would say is I'd like to work on guidance on this. I'm not there on the full piece. I mean, I think it is fair to critique, you know, when I think of equity, I have broad-brush values. When I think of economic development, I'm thinking of specific economic development that can lead to progress. But the overall business climate is also critical. I guess I feel comfortable that that adaptive reuse, I'm okay there and not to the broader dollar amount, given our constrained resources. But I would like to work on guidance. And just one thing we haven't talked about, that I would guess that all colleagues are there on. I'm not in a place, unfortunately, to advocate for restoring the principal planner position that was cut. But I don't think there's any cost to freezing the position, and I do think that's an important signal that is related to this. It's slightly different, but I would ask, colleagues might have responses to my fee thought, you, Ms. Cunningham, but I also wonder if eventually we can get to the freezing of the principal planner.
I think Mr. Manager may have something to add.
So we've had a lot of conversations about this, and I think it's important, because I haven't really spoken about this in the last month. CMRI, which is our Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative, we, the adaptive reuse change that you all adopted, and I think it's probably six months ago, has been really well-received and it's been excellent. We have two big chunks ahead of us. One is on the sign ordinance. I've just had a conversation with the chair about that. And the other is on major minor amendments. We have heard loud and clear from NAAP, and I have also heard loud and clear from staff. We're ready to move ahead with the sign ordinance very soon. And the major minor is, as you said, Mr. De Ferenti, four words sometimes will wrap us around the axle. The challenge with that is that it's, you know, how people see the four words. I think we're committed. We have the staff in place, and we're ready to launch those next pieces to you very quickly. In the next month, we'll be coming to you. In the next month, we'll be coming to you. In May, yeah, that's next month. Next month, we'll be coming to you with something on the sign ordinance, and then after that, the major minor. So I know that that's a little bit of cold comfort for people who have to pay the fees, but we have heard the time really is the most critical part of this. And I want to just thank the board, because you've been behind us over the last two and a half years on the CMRI. We have a lot more progress to make, and I think that's much, going to be much more transformative. It doesn't mean that the fees aren't relevant, because they are relevant, but the message has been clearly delivered. You may want to add that in your written guidance and maybe put it in like bold and underline it.
Forty-eight point font.
Big font.
We want to be the best place to do business. No, I appreciate that. And I also want to call out, CPHD, in one of the budget responses, shared a lot of detail of how we're doing on our permit processes versus what our targets are. And it is very encouraging. I know, I know, having pulled permits, you know, it never feels fun to go through a permit process, but we are monitoring that, working towards it. CRM I is going to be an incredible investment there. I think I'm fine with going to the, to the guidance route in that side. Though I might ask, on the adaptive reuse, do staff have any feedback on whether there's price elasticity there, or whether we really do need to drop those fees, or it's such an important thing to do and such a big project that it's?
You know, I actually don't have the answer to that question. I know I sat across from the head of JBG Smith, who said, finally, when you pass this, we're now ready to move one of our office buildings to a hotel, or something like that. And I know that if I had the conversation with him, he said, you've raised the fee, we're going to stop doing it. No, I think that that isn't really going to be the main driver, but it certainly is a small piece of the pro forma. So, I mean, I remain a little bit in doubt that the relief here will make a difference, but I think as a statement of priorities, I think that's actually useful.
To be, to be honest, from big developers, medium-sized developers, smaller developers, from people in the market, from practitioners, from architects, et cetera, I heard unison of one thing. They see, they see a fee increase as a price increase, right? They don't, they don't think like we do about cost coverage, et cetera. That's our problem, so to say. They see it as a price increase. And they, the only thing they see is, how does the product I'm buying from you, the service I'm buying from you, how is it improved? How does it, you know, justify the fee? And that's across the board. And the second question that they have, or second thought that they have, they share all together, is what is the value that I'm buying, right? For some, a fee for a patio may be significant, for other $50,000 for, in a multimillion-dollar project is not so significant. But they still are focusing on one thing, which is the delivery. And we have had to struggle a lot about, I mean, almost everybody accepts and agrees that delivery has improved, but not as much as to make, you know, as to be, to be in the best possible place. So I think that, yes, it will be involved in the, in the guidance. Yes, Mr. Spain.
I'm just going to, yeah, just close out. So first, I want to thank staff for giving us some alternate options to explore, and then back to Ms. Coffey for raising this question. You know, I've heard, you know, whether it's been with stakeholders at AED and others, where, you know, initially, Mr. Manager, when your proposed budget came out, these, these fees somewhat abrupt in nature, what they may appear, was really like a shock, right? And I think I'm aligned with the rest of my colleagues here with establishing some guidance language moving forward. But I would just say, let's just be mindful, Arlington is a place for business and developer, right? We want folks to come here, just be mindful of how we, you know, charge folks and expectations. I know CMRI came in back in November, right before I got here, and it's great to hear these good news stories with adaptive reuse, kind of perhaps cutting some of the fees there, but it's a challenge. And we don't want to lose business because we, you know, we're pricing folks out at the end of the day, and I think, thank your staff for giving us at least options, and squarely appreciate it. So I think the guidance language is where we're all at, Mr. Chair, somewhat. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Coffey?
Thank you. So looking at Attachment B to the work session response, page six of the PDF document that has the planning fees and the use permit type two, live entertainment and food delivery services, are those use permit fees paid for renewal in addition to new applications? So would our existing businesses have to pay the additional fee if they were renewing for an already operating business, or is it only for new applications?
Might be a little outside the DMX wheelhouse.
I actually don't know.
Okay. It's for renewal.
It's also covers renewals.
Okay, great.
You heard that.
I, yeah. Thank you to our, to our deputy county manager. I personally, you know, if we're already pulling out the adaptive reuse fees, as one, I would maybe pull out the use permit type two as an additional, which it appears from this attachment is around $14,500. I think, I think that it is reasonable to, as a statement of policy, say that we want to ensure that our food service businesses, entities are able to continue to operate. I think especially given that it will hit our already existing businesses. I think that's one that I would be interested in pulling out if we're not doing a larger technique here with respect to the fees.
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to, that sum of money is not extreme. I'm happy to align with that thought. I want to acknowledge, Ms. Cunningham, you're correct, I don't see price elasticity on the adaptive reuse. It's a conversation with our chamber candidly, and then one comment from one commenter a week ago, that led me to feel that this is the targeted way that I would like to signal that we're open for business. And so that aligns with the manager's explanation, but I grant your point that I'm not at a, you know, I'm not at a granular piece. I would, I would sort of see, as we work towards consensus, if guidance plus what Ms. Coffey in adaptive and childcare can work for us, as long as we write the guidance strong enough and then follow up well enough. That's what I would propose, but that's just my thoughts.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I think we've all been really diligent in trying to balance that need to signal how open for business we are and how much work is going on to ease the pathway through the business, for businesses. I guess, in the nature of identifying things, we might give up if we had to. I would probably keep the adaptive reuse fee on that list as something that if we need to hold off and then watch for a year and see. I think we're seeing pretty big uptake so far. Again, those are usually large projects, so I'm not sure the fee's going to, you know, matters, but it's not a big part of the project. So I would just leave it in that middle bucket for, in my view.
So that means, do I read you correctly? Ms. Coffey, that would be the, the, the commercial permit type, number one, and use permit type number two, live entertainment. Would you, would you like to include, to, to go with alternative fee level there?
Yes, for county board use permit type two, live entertainment and food delivery services, which is the third from the bottom row of fees shown on the screen at the moment, highlighted on the screen.
That's the, that has an impact of $14,488. Yes, we are ongoing, still in the back. We can perfectly accommodate that at this point, and I would support that. So let's, let's include that, if we can.
And then in the interest of completeness, not for now, but for June, Arts Placemaking Grant, we did a pilot this year. We don't yet have the results of it, but the early indications are very, very positive that that one-time grant application process encouraged connectivity between arts organizations and new venues and economic activity. So just on the wish list for June, if we find ourselves with a little money back.
I'm fully aligned with it, provided you align on the WAMADA, WAMADA piece. I'm just playing.
Yeah. So have we incorporated the $14,488? Okay. Yes, and now we are, we still have $11,000 to include there. So going forward, are there other items to add or modify from the non-big league discussion of the million dollars from WAMADA?
Not for me.
Not for Ms. Cunningham?
Not a dollar impact, but to pick up in guidance, we had a conversation about streamlining our bids and partnerships, support and shared services, and clarifying their contracts, but I think we'll put that in guidance.
Okay.
I'm not supportive of that. Sorry. But I still think it's good that you surfaced.
Oh, no, Ms. Coffey? No, okay. Not supportive.
Mr. Chair, I just want to, Ms. Cunningham, can you clarify, just talk a little bit more about that, just for a refresher?
Yes, just in our bids and partnerships discussion, we noted that everybody's doing a brand developed marketing advertising campaign, and so AED is, is working a little bit on this, but I think we should signal that it's important to us that we make sure that we're, you know, we're getting the best value across all of the bids and partnerships if we need marketing. We should buy marketing in bulk if we can, et cetera. And I think, I think it's just part, and I think this will be part of an overall message of continuing to work on fine-tuning and efficiencies finding, which is going to happen anyway, in a time of constraint, but particularly around our partnerships and bids and making sure that they have what they need to really deliver on what we want. I think some of the contracts with the bid, with the partnerships haven't been refreshed in a while, and so, you know, being real clear about what outcomes we're looking for and what, how we support them.
Mrs. Spain, any comment on that?
No, that's, that's, that's good, good context. I would probably want to have some, some additional conversations with, and I appreciate your, your, your view, but I would like to have some conversations with, with the bids as well. I think there's, there's definitely ways they can enhance cross-collaborations in the spirit and intent behind where, you know, where we want them to go. But I just wanted to hear your context for right now, or any other additional comments right now from?
Chair? While I have something to say, Ms. Coffey, yes?
New topic, so.
Okay, I may offer some thoughts here. So number one, I do, Ms. Cunningham, I, we have discussed that. Here's my opinion on this. First, I think that, you know, looking and interacting with, especially with our partnerships and all bids, to see how their, their business models work, how their marketing works, what can be improved, et cetera, is a core function of Arlington Economic Development. This is why Arlington Economic Development has liaisons to each and every of the partnerships, and actually, we have county board appointees and even liaisons from our board to the boards of the, of the Business Improvement Districts. The, these are really two different types of organizations, very different from each other. The Business Improvement Districts have the internal capacity to acquire any expertise they need for, for improving their, both their business as well, the business efficiency, as well as their marketing and any, anything else they, they need. They have a dedicated, practically dedicated financing source, and they have boards that are, that really try to squeeze the maximum out of the, you know, the organizations they help to finance, because the, the members of their boards are basically stakeholders. And on the, on the, on the partnerships, they are small organizations, far less able to be hyper-efficient, and they have also very restricted budgets. But there is, this is where I wouldn't add any additional money on, or external money to this, because I believe that.
Again, the recommendation was guidance, that we care about.
Guidance we can.
That was the recommendation.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't, at this point, I think that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I should be less of a veteran grump. So it's, I'm open to guidance just on that, but I also want to sit down and have a conversation with you and Ms. Flanagan-Watson about that guidance, because we, I didn't lead one of these partnerships, and I didn't, I don't have the history of economic development, I think engagement, probably perhaps at you. I feel like liaisons in AED is, is a lot for me, and then the experience of the efforts that were well-intentioned, I'm not ruling it out, I just want to be transparent that I felt like we got into a level of oversight that wasn't my first choice. And so that history, you got it, and then we, then I'll be more open and less of a grump, but I just think that that's the relevant piece that I wanted to share. You may have already had that conversation, but there was two or three years where we got way deep in this, and I didn't feel, I felt we tried really hard, but I didn't feel like it was the thing that got me up and made me excited every day. And so we can just have that conversation, I'm open from there to the guidance question.
My apologies, I thought we were talking about funding and not about guidance. I apologize for not having understood that correctly. Still, I think that there is a fine line between micromanaging organizations that have working boards. I would be, I would be open to entertain some sort of guidance that still is balanced. Ms. Coffey?
New topic, so if there's more on that.
Okay.
Okay, great. I think just important to note, for those following along at home, a topic we've had a lot of discussion about, which is World Pride, which is, in this fiscal year, we have received a proposed plan, we believe we can fund it through this fiscal year, and so the lack of a line item on the screen does not indicate a lack of action or planning when it comes to World Pride, but just that we have found a way to make it work within fiscal year 25's budget and existing funds. And that would not be otherwise demonstrated in anything we've shown or discussed today.
Yes, in the same vein, Mr. Spain, I think.
Yeah, I just want to lift that up, and thank you for bringing it to the conversation, Ms. Coffey. And at 8:30 this morning, probably a lot of folks were still sleeping. We started out Langston Boulevard Alliance, had their monthly meeting, and enough a good note, that was part of the conversation. They are well-prepared of, for some of the placemaking and leading up to World Pride, they have a plan, and so that is, it is good to go. I know there's been a significant concern across all of Arlington, so I'm looking forward to seeing how much we can do, and I know we have some money in FY25 budget to make this happen. So good on the county, and I think that's answering the mail in large part to a lot of our stakeholders in Arlington, or especially groups like Equality Arlington. Thank you.
And I think, and Mr. Spain, since you're at this, there is a, an item missing from the list that was of particular importance for you, which was the Green Valley Initiative appropriation.
Yes.
And.
Are we carrying that money over?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the money's not spent this year, this is, but we need to, to get, and that's for our Green Valley folks who are listening now.
Yes.
Or will be listening. We have to get to a, to a good place to be able to invest that money, you know, by closeout in the fall, et cetera, would be the ideal.
And I think the question often comes up, you know, so we have this, this pot of money, what is it going to be used for? How's it going to be used? You know, and if you, if you're draping it with an equity analysis, right, you know, has it been intended purpose? And I'd love to hear from our county manager, if he doesn't mind, any thoughts you have on, on that, that pot of funds.
So I'm going to be reflecting a little bit, I think, what you heard from the chair when we talked about.
when we talked about this previously, which is the, the funds were set aside with an expectation. We've gone through several iterations of trying to figure it, going all the way back to the Amanda and Bondur Johnson approaches and, and different ways of trying to enhance economic activity in that part of our community. We've tried different ways. I'm not sure that any of them have particularly succeeded. All of them have one thing in common, which is we need to bring all the stakeholders together, whether it's members of the faith community, members of the civic association, and people who are residents, and have that conversation. The theory behind last year's appropriation was we would set aside the funds, and then we would begin conversations. Those conversations happened. I think the chair was involved with some of them. We had our economic development staff, our Parks and Recreation, Police Department down there. They have not gotten traction. So I think carrying the money over and saying to the community, partner with us to do that, is the way to go. I think that, that is probably the best approach, and I'm sort of getting, I don't want to get ahead of the board on that, but I think that's what I've heard.
Correct. And Mrs. Spain, I know that you are very invested in revitalizing this process.
Well, I think we all are. We should be, as a board collective, and thank you, Mr. Manager, for your words, and I look forward over the next few months and come year to do work not only there, but all across Arlington. Thank you.
Thank you. So, more items, adding or subtracting, then let's go back to the, the real tough ones, which is the Womata reduction, the million-dollar discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I defer, but I, I could try and frame it, if you, but you go.
Well, I was about to ask, it's, it's okay. I can.
So, the staff's answer on the Womata included both, the, it included a very carefully-written last sentence, which said, which reflects Ms. Coffey's concern that certainly not all of it should be counted on. You know, there was a time, ten days ago, when I was like, there might be a little ongoing, and someone said, maybe. And I've tried to be conservative, reasonably, fiscally responsible, I would say, in lieu of conservative. But the, it also says you should not do new programs or initiatives. And when I look at that list, we're not doing, to my knowledge, we're not doing new programs or initiatives, and we're looking at every, almost everything, except probably one or two things that I've named, at least from my standpoint, through an equity lens. And so, I would, that's what leads me to be comfortable, using the fourteen thousand that Ms. Coffey identified. And I'm comfortable with the Womata decision, because, in part, because I've been in all these DMV moves meetings. I will say, just honestly, if we don't win the governor's race, and we don't have a new tax source, then the ongoing problems will, will be multiple millions. I don't know what DMF has scored them at, but there'll be multiple millions in ongoing if we don't do those. And that would be a regional solution that would have a Virginia component that would be distinct from DC and Maryland. So, I'm comfortable with moving forward, and, and I think there's, budgetary responsibility is fiscal, it is community engagement-related, and it's also ethical and equity-based and moral. And we can have differing views on what is moral perfection on a budget, but I'm comfortable that with the eleven-point-five million and the not-new initiatives, new programs, that I think are going to lead to ongoing expenses that we cannot address, I'm comfortable with the Womata spend of eight hundred and, as I count it, thirty-five thousand plus fourteen-point-five thousand. So, eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And, because I, we're going to have to use, of course, we're, if we get into the trouble that we're seeing, we may have to make contingencies, but I think that the other equity-based pieces make it worthwhile for me.
Others, I was about to say that if we are going to see the real numbers in a few weeks' time, so well ahead of any June consideration, we, we could, and that's something I offer to colleagues, we could mark on, on guidance the, the items, and then revisit them on being upfront, or, or we could do that in a separate.
For me, even in, I'd be interested in the manager, Mr. Chair, but for me, I think there needs to be a decision point. Yes, even in COVID's worst year, we adopted something, and then we revised and revised and revised. And I think it seems fair to staff to let them do their process, do the count, and then recount if we have to in June. That would be my advice. DMF and the manager would be the ones who would know whether we can do a rolling adoption that changes dates. I don't know if we all want to spend.
If that's a question, I can't, Richard's already lost his hair.
No, no.
I don't even have to look over at him. You should decide, and then you can re-decide.
Yeah, that's, that's the clean way to do that. I mean, in my opinion, we have to make a decision today. I mean, there is no question about that. I mean, the, I was not proposing not to make the decision. I was proposing to just indicate that we will have to, to, if, if certain specific circumstances change. So, so one, one thing that I want to ask, since we have hundred-and-forty thousand and three-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars that are unallocated, that's, that, that, you know, that would normally go into reducing the, the line forty-five to eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand and change, right? So that it is balanced at zero at the end.
If you left this amount unallocated, we would just set it aside as a part of budget adoption in a contingent that could be applied then.
Anywhere.
Later to Metro or whatever else.
Understood. Colleagues, more comments? Ms. Coffey?
I remain where I was when we started. I think that I am in the minority on that, but I would just reiterate that I think it is far easier to add things if we have a pleasant surprise than to subtract things if we have a negative surprise. And so, while I understand that we can decide now and decide again later, I think we are setting ourselves up for a very difficult situation if the decision we have to make later is cuts rather than additions.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey. Ms. Cunningham?
And I remain similarly situated to where I was, that a million feels too high, reading the facial expressions of our staff, who've been through this before. It might happen, but, you know, the economy's not feeling awesome right now. So, I would probably go with five hundred, whether you make it up with the unallocated or not, and then have a little discipline to push some things to a later time for decision, rather than putting them in the mark.
Mrs. Spain?
Yeah, um, yeah, I've heard, you know, talk about being fiscally responsible with this, and the, the money's not here, but we'll keep our fingers crossed. I've heard what the vice chair has stated, and I, I have confidence that we could, we're going to be, I think, fine here. We will know more in, in the coming weeks and months to go ahead, and if we need to adapt, we can. So I think I'm, at this moment, more inclined to agree with where our vice chair wants to go with this.
Okay. Here's my opinion on this. I fully understand Ms. Coffey's cautious and fiscally absolutely correct, in my opinion, approach. There is absolutely no discussion about, about that. I mean, we have to, there is a risk attached to the line item forty-five. I personally think, and I thought a lot about this, I personally think that putting in our mark right now what we want to do, and I, I disagree with the point that it will be more difficult to, it's more easy to add than, than to cut. I think in, in the current situation, in the frame of fiscal conditions and economic conditions that we are going to face, both will be equally difficult. So for me, this is a positioning of the board of what we want, of what we have come to recognize as, as priorities. There is nothing new, actually, here, except for very few things. I mean, I, I want to see the chair, the childcare subsidy go forward. I want to see the, you know, the coverage of the housing grants. I want to see the homeless services being properly addressed, because I know that this is where the most, most challenge, the most challenges will, will arise in the very short term. So, and when we get to a point where we have a major revenue that breaks up, breaks out, I think we will have to come back and first have a very clear discussion about where we get the money and/or we give up, right? And I believe that Mr. DeFranti, what he's, what he's proposing is to look at our stabilization funds, and then, and, and I would, I wouldn't tough so easily into the stabilization fund, to be honest, because I'm just way too aware about, I mean, the risk is far bigger than the stabilization fund itself, but we don't know that yet. So for me, this is a, still a viable decision to make right now, with the caveats and the asterisks that, that this position deserves.
I, I would reiterate what I mentioned earlier. I think there's some things on this list that you can do now, you can do later, you can decide at the last minute. Library collections would be one example. There's some things on this list that if we leave this mark, our employees or future employees or future vendors that are in contracts will have expectations that are real, and, and that is a much difficult, more difficult thing to do. So I would encourage us to look hard at anything here that is a commitment to personnel, just as we've looked very hard at the reduction in force that we've done throughout the budget process. So for me, that would be the bonuses and the temporary communications staff, and I guess potentially also the restoring of the code enforcement position. You could, I think that's vacant. You could shift that in time and wait and make that decision later. But I don't think, I think we're fooling ourselves if we say we're going to leave here with a mark that affects people's jobs and livelihoods and then change it in a couple of months. I don't think that's responsible, and I don't think it's responsible to balance the budget with the assumption that you'll tap the stabilization funds. The stabilization reserve is there for when it really hits the fan, and we have really hard.
Mr. Chair?
Just, yes.
So.
Mr. DeFranti?
There's nothing magic about one-point-three percent or two percent. There's nothing magic about it. It is what we worked out last year through this markup process. We have twenty-one million already in the stabilization reserve. We are adding eleven-point-five million. The underreported story of the last month and a half is that we have said, no way to AHIF, which is, every year we do that. So, I do not, the eleven-point-five is wise because tariffs are terrible economic policy, but the idea that this is not responsible is totally irresponsible. That, that's too much for me. The big story is that we're not raising real estate taxes. The big story is that we're helping homeless people, big time. We are helping our most in need. This is about the equivalent of less than an eighth of a percent, or a sixteenth of a percent of the real estate tax rate. We have twenty-plus years of being triple-triple-A bond rating. I can accept that this isn't as responsible as folks might, might like, but the word that I would say about irresponsible is too much for me to stomach. Irresponsible is if we're adding FTEs and can't handle them. Irresponsible is if we put two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand into ongoing without paying for it. And so, I, I'm not saying I'm not wrong. I could be wrong about everything that I've said, but those three items and investing in our people that way, and the relative investment that we've made and how detailed we've gotten, we might not be totally perfect, but I, I'd love to hear it if folks say there's something magical about that eleven-point-five million. I'm not going to touch it unless we have to, but we're saying that the delta of five-hundred thousand on eleven-point-five million plus twenty-one million is the, is the level of whether we're responsible or not, and I'm not there.
Just my personal approach to that, Ms. Cunningham, I also don't think that we're doing anything irresponsible here. What, it is a fair thing to say that jobs are important, and, you know, the money that is connected to jobs is.
Can I just clarify, because I think there may have been a listening comprehension? The, what I'm saying is that stabilization funds, we can decide what amount to put in the stabilization fund. If you want to have an amendment that says let's do eleven instead of eleven-point-five, that's fine. But the concept of the stabilization fund, as I understand it, is truly a rainy day, you know, insurance fund, right? So it's, it's not a, you know, we've tapped it three or four times. It's not the Armageddon Fund, right, that we hope to never, ever tap, but we tap it in really hard times, and so we can argue about what that amount is. I do not think we should use stabilization fund amounts to balance our budget. We could decide to put less in the stabilization fund to, so I'm just clarifying that, okay?
Well, at this moment, we're not using stabilization fund. At any rate, we're using a, we are, we are using a million dollars from an expected reduction, Womata reimbursement, so to say, that, that may be less than what we estimate right now, which is not very different from estimating a certain income, a certain revenue from mill stocks or other things. I mean, it has almost a very similar level of risk at this point, right? It used to be differently. And if, if you ask me, what's the maximum level of risk here that I see, let's say it's fifty percent, right? So it still would keep the, the jobs, the job-related appropriations intact here. We would have other places to reduce.
I guess I just really disagree with that. I think that if, if your expected risk is fifty percent, then I think we should cut that number by fifty percent and balance based on that. To me, what feels irresponsible is to balance the budget based on something we don't believe is certain, on the assumption that, well, we'll figure it out later. I, I just, I'm not comfortable with that. Personally, I understand that I'm in the minority. I'm not going to keep pushing it, but I think, to me, I would feel far more comfortable if we reached a point that said, we are certain we have X amount of money, and we can balance it at that, and not that we are already pre-planning to tap into stabilization funds, additional cuts, things down the road, as a, as a pre-planned backup measure. The, I think that we are headed for uncertain and difficult times, and that the backup plan needs to be for the things that are not within the control of this board. The things that we put on our mark here are things that are within our control, and if we are planning within our control to have our own uncertainty, that makes me really uncomfortable.
Understood. Ms., okay, Mr. DeFranti first.
If you read what is involved in the economic stabilization fund, it is not a lockbox. And it is a new thing that the manager has proposed. So, and I've had multiple conversations with DMF, and everyone else can as well. It is not a, there is no listening comprehension problem. It is not a me not being responsible. It is a difference of opinion on a tiny amount of money, and I don't put the risk as, at close to fifty percent. I think that's fair if you thought it was fifty percent to be worried. It's, for me, it's not close to that. So, I mean, you know, that doesn't mean, I'm not trying to take away the view, but to say that it's a sin to do economic stabilization. When you look at those qualities, and when we've never done it, and when I think the manager correctly is saying, don't spend, is, is the big picture as I see it, and sorry about that.
By the way, just for clarification, the fifty percent. By the way, just for clarification, the 50% is a hypothetical just to demonstrate that the job-related expenditures would be still intact if, if this was the case, so.
I just want to, probably, give me 30 seconds or so, no? So, I've already made my decision on where I think we, we should go, and we're still talking about this particular issue because we are, some, some of us feel a certain way, and that's okay. I would just cautions us on, you know, words like irresponsible have a lot of meaning. And, you know, among colleagues and among those that are viewing this, this, this meeting, it implies a lot. And we have a folks of esteemed professionals sitting across from us from DMF who are helping us and have helped us over the past several weeks to arrive at this point. I, I would just say that, you know, I think there's a couple ways you can look at this, this million dollars from WAMADA, possibly. But at the end of the day, there's uncertainty all around us. Uncertainty is not going anywhere anytime soon. And so, in, in this moment, I think we, we need to find ways, I believe, hopefully, to compromise, and we're, it's quite obvious we're not going to agree on everything. But I think we've spent a little bit, perhaps too much time here. We can continue to talk, but I, I, there's a lot here on this agenda that we need to, to get through. And I just wanted to share those words, being that this is my, my first session. But again, I, I do take, to what our vice chair said, I, I take note of what people say. And so, we're all here commensurate with professionals, and we have to be, be very careful about words we're, we're using here as a group, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Payne. So, colleagues.
Could I ask?
Yes.
DMF to put up the budget response? Or can you clarify how long we've had an economic stabilization fund and what the intended uses and past uses have been? Just to make sure we're all.
So, we've had a, an economic, and we've called it different things over the years since at least 2013. And there were a number of years in the beginning where the board, you know, we, we had a reserve set up and didn't add to it, didn't spend from it. We have, over the course of the years, tapped it three different times in two different fiscal years. So, here is, yeah, this is the follow-up that was provided.
Great, so it's been around in some form for about a decade. We tapped it twice in the COVID era of exciting times, and that's why I think we're expecting we might tap it again. Mr. Chair, I.
And we replenished that also.
Yeah, and we replenished it over two years because we're fiscally disciplined, which is awesome. Mr. Chair, I would just hand it back to you, but I would say it sounds like the majority of the board is with your markup as it is. I would request at minimum that we include a line there that says, Metro, 500,000 and reducing the economic stabilization fund by a half a million so that, you know, we can come back and add another half a million to the stabilization fund in June if we've got it. But I think that might address the uncertainty issue and just be a little bit more transparent.
So, to basically add an insurance line and to add the five, reduce the stabilization fund by 500,000?
Right, so, so we are, we're currently in the proposed budget, adding to the stabilization fund 11.5, correct?
Yes.
So, in order to address Ms. Coffey's concern and Mr. DeFranti's concern, I would suggest we put, we bank half a million for Metro with a note that says, we hope it'll be higher, and that we only put 11 million in the stabilization fund for the moment, hoping that in June we'll be able to clean that all up.
Which, which would mean that we would pre, pre-finance a part of that? So, we would secure the financing of that.
That's not how I'd describe it, but sure, you could think of it.
I mean, your assumption that Metro won't be more than 500,000, half a million, and then you want to.
You'll have a happy surprise later if it's more, and you might, you know, we can put that right into the stabilization fund. So, we would be not quite taking the manager's recommendation on the full amount of funding the stabilization fund and, and reducing it by half a million.
I would support that.
Okay, but this is an amendment we have to write for the, for our budget discussion.
So, first of all, those three times we tapped it, it was all at 1.3%, right?
No, they, we had lower levels back in the past. We've been bringing that percentage up over time.
So, the question is whether we have an obligation or not to, we have, we have always been triple AAA, but we have had conversations, and so the question is whether we have an obligation or not. I'm fine if that's going to make you, make folks feel more comfortable, but that's, it's still true that the stabilization fund is a word to describe a more fiscally responsible choice, not a lockbox or a, we're shady if we do 500,000 less.
Not shady at all. I'm just saying the, the manager had recommended 11 and a half million in his proposed budget. We're doing the markup of that budget as we see fit. I think I'm hearing amongst colleagues, a concern and amongst staff, that the million is, is possible.
Yeah, 800,000.
I mean, the million, and we have it in there as a Metro line item, right? So, to Ms. Coffey's point of, let's have a happy surprise in June instead of an additional gap, let's, let's just say we're not committing to 11, in fact, 11.5 stabilization right now, we're committing to 11, because it balances that way. It's not, it's not saying we're raiding this, the lockbox or non-lockbox or whatever. We're just saying, we are hoping to put a little bit more in in June, but we're going to commit to doing 11 in our budget markup.
I'm okay with that.
To, to put another way, you know, I would just say, it would anticipate that we plan to have a WAMADA refund of 500,000, and then anything above that that we might receive would be added to our stabilization fund. And that way, we are both covering our bases here, and if we are wrong, we, we get back closer to the manager's recommendation as far as the stabilization fund.
Yeah, that, that just moves the risk of that to a different transaction, which, at this point, I'm friendly to, but I have to think a little bit through whether I want to still, I would, under these conditions, still support some of the expenditures here, right?
Mr. Chair, I, I, I like the alternative that Ms. Cunningham has put forward. And I think I, after what I'm, I'm hearing here, I'm aligned with that. I can, I can work there with that, okay?
So, that, that is noted, so we will craft an amendment to, to do this this way, right? But this is not for.
You wanted 500,000, because you were, you were talking about 300,000 is what you didn't want to spend, but you wanted 500,000.
We heard about 500,000 here, so we will add it. Let's add it now.
I'm good with that.
And the WAMADA. Okay. Have to say, as a caveat, I, I know where my 500,000 would go if it's WAMADA money, and if it's not, I, I know what, I wouldn't support at this point from the rest of the list, right? So, this is still not.
That would be an alternate, right? Would be to, to leave the stabilization fund at 11.5 and take 500 out. I did not hear majority support for that in our first round through, but I would also be very open to considering that, and I think Ms. Coffey has also said so.
But let's take victory from the jaws of defeat, right? And we got, the, let's do the 500,000, we can put it back. There is one other, I think we're almost done, because we talked about 14.5,000 in the fee discussion.
Yeah, we.
So, if we add that and do the 500,000, is that the sufficient head nods so that we can wrap up?
Yeah, we have that, the 40,000 is in, 40,000 is in, and we have the head nods for that. So, does this more or less conclude for now? And by the way, there's still 140,000 unallocated there. No, no, it's effectively, it reduces the, the WAMADA to less than 300,000. Okay, so.
Can I mention one thing? Because we take this mark, we're going to come back to you with an appropriations resolution that shows all these numbers. The unallocated amounts will go into non-departmental, into a contingent fund that we'll then bring back to you in June, that'll still be sitting there, it won't go anywhere.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we have that guidance from you, because Richard and staff will start putting together the appropriations resolution to have these numbers conform.
It's personal, not my style, I want to, to zero, zero it out, so.
That's fine, that's fine too, that's fine too. I just want, I, that was, it's sort of a little bit of a loose end, but.
We can add to this spreadsheet at the bottom, the wording for the contingent, and just plug the 140 and the 11 in as spent, so it shows on this that it's all allocated, and there you go.
Yeah, I mean, the, the way you consider it best, so. Just, just for, yeah. Just for the record, for me, this. Okay. Okay, so are we then done with that? Thank you, everybody, for a lot of spirited discussion, as it should be in tough times. Then, at this point, we're adjourned. And we have some other things to take care of.